Some of these may overlap, so we can work together. I had sent a draft communication. We flipped over. And I also just emailed into the document, one document. All the ones here. The information that we got over. So, the draft communication has several components, but just okay at work to start at the bottom, which is the section where we talk about listening learned by me. Because that is one of the areas that we said more for home trauma this year for our process. So it's on the bottom of page one. And then what you see after that, it says phase one. And then there's the listen. And then phase two, where are we? I'm sorry. Learn is phase one. And then you have phase two, which is design. And then phase three. So those are the different components each year defined. And then at the very bottom, that's that we're beginning phase one of the process is our aim to engage and include various stakeholders, focus groups, community forums, informational sessions, surveys, interviews, listening sessions, and other types of meetings. Better understand the experiences and perspectives of all of our first school community. These methods of engaging with our school community have been a vital part of the decision making of the path as well as part of our year through the process. The feedback will continue to inform our decision making in the future. And then after the process is defined, then there's a piece at the bottom. And I just started a new form that would get a new sign up for people that own a certificate and work for that registered parties. And then just remind the people that if they were signed up for the DEI task force, that they would be sort of registered through this process. So just talking about how we're going to move that then first.
With the bands, what the communication was, everybody else might be a little lost. About what is, what is the communication generally before we give details about it?
Sure, the communication was our attempt to share information about there may be questions about where we're headed, what are we doing, what are our next steps. And then the other pieces that we talked about, other work sessions, where that can be. And also a possible just timeline of sharing out the timelines of how we got to where we are. And basically telling you that today is the first thing this is. We have a meeting in contract.
So an update on the EAT progress today. And the EAT issue.
It's just completely just like you guys, I know that it's not everyone has everything. This is a draft, we're good using it, so it's gonna be a final. It'll be on my website, so all this work will go, this is just very much draft. So I guess my, again, my first question is just, does this the process that we're completing? Kind of go where it could. Yes, it's back to equals. When you're being traditionally always. And you know, for us, a lot of projects, telling the fellow, follow up on our specifics about how some face listening sessions and focus groups and forums will be led. That's all of that. Right. And that's what we do, we need to discuss when we discuss the district goals and the process of how fast. And I know that in some cases, this feel, might feel like a piece of a spell, but it's very, that it happens. I've been meeting with a lot of people, and I've been doing a lot of listening and even learning, you know, understanding, but I have a lot being right. So just making sure that I change this narrative, make sure that I understand the full story in those cases. So I would say that phase one of this blank stage is still probably at least, I would just go the same side, say through the end of October, the end of September meetings. So I need a really touchable list of people that we know that have been stakeholders. I mean, community leaders, they decide to put that, let's just make sure that I'm meeting and talking about student and school and those kinds of things. So I would say phase one would be at least probably another month or so. And but understanding the phase one, there's still need to put together, I think, a survey to gain information from different stakeholder groups in our school community. And school community, students, staff, parents, residents. If we get some alumni that are great, talk about experiences. So it's a pretty diverse group. The interview process and document analysis, I think, is going on. And then you can also do some focus groups, do some different designs. So what if you guys, for take spot, we bring in groups of people, talk about the experience you're in, the experience you're in school, who define the moments, and not where you can kind of additionally direct a better machine in the process, how we are, where we are today. And then from that, you can do things like conversation cafes, which could be smaller groups around fields, talking about different questions and different issues. The different kinds of groups that would allow people to sign up. I can see that will improve, and that's where we can get into the, this is more be able to find those.
Yeah, I think that phase one, what you're talking about, to do it competitively. Want to make sure that we ourselves spend that time. I mean, I would expect to do that. That's something you know, a lot of small groups. And then allow time to sit beside the information.
And right now, the plan is, I know this has kind of been a question too, that I've been feeling in conversation. I really plan to facilitate the listener part of it, because they really need to be back for themselves as well. Because I know there's been questions, like, if we can design or decide to go with planning and those kinds of things, we may then need to look at some extra support. And I'm confident that I think we can all, by ourselves, scheduling more than we can.
So what we're saying is depending on how broad, we now need to plan on the timing, the resources.
It could be also, I would challenge to think about how focused. If it's focused somewhere that we need to bring in experts or we need to bring in support, we just need to be able to do that. Because that's a, that's a invite that you, as a school leader, you can use this. And use it a lot in education, there are just specialists and different things. So if we identify something that we want to do, or we want to focus on specifically from those listening sessions in their school community, then what we'll do is, I didn't rely on someone to do that work for us. I would share, if you have a workshop, share out what that like. Cafes. You're having people that move into a table, you need a table leader at every table. Comfortable, they can do this with, so.
I see five, thank you. So no, I mean, you would want to be trying, did we please that are the best people to use this?
But that's the message that we need to be, right? There's a better one, there's things that are helpful, but not quite. I don't refuse those in class, and they're talking like, helping with like facilities or things like that.
The only part about the communication that I learned to think a little more clear at the work of the task force, that phase has to be. So I've seen tracks for trying to approach that with the, need to break certain here in order to be a part of the conversation. Straightforward that says as the, as the, since the work, as the work of the task forces, those want to be a part of the conversation. While you're coming, I want to end your, that there's a real intent here to provide an experience and hear of some miscommunication or misunderstanding about what we have done so far, but also then setting that leadership direction of where we're headed and how people can get involved. And I think it clearly, you know, this, this idea of the spending several months on listening and learning is, it's a very clear implication that the district wants to include all voices, whether it be a parent, or a staff member, or a student, or a resident, or a alumni, or whatever. Those are all important voices for us to have, which we have as we're propping really the best trajectory to achieve high academic performance for all of our students with all of their needs. So I love, I love what you're doing here. I think it's a great communication piece to start with and to ensure that we have experience. I don't know if you'll have a perfect idea tonight of what that's going to look like. And I know you have our support to maneuver as things change with the idea that the goal is right now to learn as much as you can about how we can improve. So it might be, you know, you might say tonight, you're going to do three conversations happening, and you may get into it beside allowing you to do, you know, a ton of them, so.
I think the biggest about, the largest number would be fifty to sixty, the stakeholders, the people we wish.
Yeah, it's a big undertaking.
Those are very powerful, I think, will be important to what you're speaking to here. If you work towards the top of the document, the draft is a bit, I'm struggling a little bit. With what you put. So we have talked about trying to communicate the work of the task force and communicate like an FAQ to try to answer some questions or this under name. And so what I did at the beginning of this document was to try to address that. But I'm not sure that's the purpose of this document. The purpose of this document may be to talk about where we're headed. But it's really important that somehow we incorporate links or have connections so that people can go to those other documents. Do you want that as a part of the front of this letter? Does this letter start more like toward that, like bullets? I just don't know what your feelings are, how much? Because if letters take too long, also they get lost. And the most important part of this document is what are we going to do next? I think that's the, really, the question, right? And what I'm going on to read is, but that's the piece that I think people are most interested in. This other stuff could be fresh. Because then if I ever wanted to just read what the FAQ was, I could do that right away. Or there may be people that'll say, I've been at every board meeting, I don't want that meeting. Like, we'll need enough of these. So those are the pieces that I'm trying to lay out, or how we want to proceed with that.
I'd like a reading document about what, what's next. And I do agree, the first part of it, you know, the whole first page, these people there, who have been following the conversation of purpose before. I know I have a pretty good idea now of what it is. And, you know, some of these bullet points speak to things that people, you know, or to people have maybe suggested or actions for this, they just sort of have that. And I don't really want to give that airtime, so I don't know that some of them.
Except that we did tell people who were working on an FAQ.
Oh, no, we started, she, for sure, all of that should be linkable and transparent. And on the website, I just need, that this somehow is district communication. I want to make sure that every person who's interested in what the district is doing is all taking time to read the three paragraphs, understand the listening. This is learn, the design, the process, and then what phase one looks like. A little worried about, you know, hearing from people that didn't, that weren't, didn't feel like they were covered the rest of the last process, and a little worried about actually getting down to the right paragraph.
They feel like it's redundant, I know it was slow in the process, but some of the pieces I was still gathering just from getting the different perspectives, field, and I wanted to be as accurate as I could make it. So that's, I think there'll be a way to create or recreate that, or have you had a chance to review that draft, that you'd be comfortable with?
Yes, yeah. Okay, so do we want it linked? I do think there are two chapters to this communication. And so maybe we split it into two communications. One would be their objective of where we met. And the second one would be the communication of where we're going. I don't know that we need to stay where we've been. In a district wide communication. I think it should be accessible. I think that the communication of here's where we're going should have a link to all the information on where we've been, or anyone that.
Well, I think if there's a link that says, here's where we're going, if you want more information about where we've been, if you have questions, questions, if you have business, you can put a link. You're not supposed to go to those, without just spamming people too much stuff, right? Too long, or you're not going to be able to focus on. That way you're getting out the primary message, which means what most folks are covering now, but you're providing an experience and access easily, which is probably more of a like question. Spurs, how would people do that?
Well, I can, yeah. It's okay, you know, I think, I think that it's all part of the email blast. Because what we can do is link the FAQ, and then if you liked the other documents, with the timeline expected, put together of events, we could link it at the bottom. So if you want it to be like, here's the past, there's more information. Then you can go as we want, because when you started with the FAQ, and then going through the 20, 20, 21 task force document in timelines, there's one, twelve facts. So if you want to see something, and you want to hit the email blast, the, there are many where you can click on all those things and see it. So that would be interactive, it'd be included in the last, I don't know, building the end. On all the information that we're here with.
I also think it would be great if we could have a tab on the webpage. So sometimes people would hear that there was a communication, have not seen the communication, search for the communication, not where it was. So we can post this on the webpage, but also maybe have tabs where it's clear. Maybe it's a text, or someone who's not on our, please, accept, accept. So we can live with that, how do you know this way?
Transparency, but. And I'm wondering, I think that answer to that will come out of when we have more broad communication plan.
It's just sometimes the communications drop off, like, go on the website, there's more recent communications without a delete, than the search, going to the next, searching, making sure we can just sort of search them.
Like, if we drive to the north, my goal is to try to conduct the brief business presence comment. Could have a link, a page, something on the board page. I, I think it's a good idea to identify a location. And maybe it gets a higher level, maybe it's on the district front page for two weeks, but then, so that people know, so that it's always, all information remains in the same place. They'll begin to build the repository, so that if someone wants to find something, they can go back and look for it. And I don't know where we're going to put that.
Yeah, some of this is just a general communication, how I've found that I've missed something. And I've heard it's out there, or it's like, it's not, you know, it's like searching anything. There's, there's something there, there's something last week, or it gets harder to navigate or to find words in search. I want to take advantage of your time on the next two pieces. But if you just quickly want to share that the administrative team, the cabinet and principals are finding with district goals, so those were shared originally, they're now in action plans, maybe they're packed. Will also get input, it's just a little piece of it, regarding the elderly, but not in share regarding the students and our staff. It's really important that we're all on the same page and identify the same call of purpose. And so once all that's done, that would be in September. So my guess is either the last September meeting, or the first October meeting, more likely they have two or six meetings. But that would be in November. So that you're aware of where the three goals are, like principals and teachers will be creating their special growth comments around one of those kinds of things. So just know that that works to be done. And the last piece that I have that makes all of this together is to make sure that we're heading in the right direction with what we want to accomplish with our strategic planning and our goals, or if we're looking at a subset, or if we're looking at one focus point, and looking at a bigger comprehensive plan. I guess just looking for some conversation around what your thoughts are about what we've had a couple or big meetings together. What, where did they, what did that just happen?
You first mentioned, or asked, like, you know, how do we continue, how do we continue this work? How do we do this work not in the right work of our strategic plan? I didn't really have the same respect about what you're asking me to do now. I don't really want the strategic plan to be rushed, because I think you will have brilliant insights to bring into our district. You know, wanting the time that you need to get to know our students, get to know our staff, get to know the culture, community more, I mean, and have all of that incorporated where we go. But I do think, I know this not part of our strategic plan is creating some of a confusion, because it's sort of just floating out there, and, and people aren't sure where it stands in the work of the district. So I don't, that's, I'm, I'm thinking about that more. Whereas before, I felt certain we could continue to parallel craft. That's where.
Well, I totally agree that we do not have a rush. A year ago, before we knew Tom Hunt was leaving, we were going to get back to strategic plan this year. But then when the super ten of these, if you get, find the right person and bring them in, we talked about, okay, we got a school that's not, we need to let you, yeah, just like what Sharon said, learn our community, learn our culture, understand the students, so. To me, I'm not expecting the strategic plan to be rushed.
Do you see a way that this work can be grounded in the existing strategic plan? And the goals that are developed and just apply for this year? Think that would help us if we're, if we're not going to start on the strategic plan right now.
And I think, and I don't have a chart in me, I didn't bring that forward. I think the strategic plan that you're operating with the APPA had diversity and who gets in it. So that's easy, because that's the foundation that we're building here in Toronto. And if you just bring your mission to empower students to maximize their potential, then that's achievement, right? Because if they're applying to different schools, like, you've been doing this work for a long time, depending on where you're at. And I think, so definitely, yes. And I think even if the district holds, because of the different layers and the different components that we've embedded with the administrative team, they identified, they looked at data, they achieved the data, and identified those areas that we can drill, we can stretch. I think that that would loop right into this work. It may not look like, it may look a little different, I think that's okay. But the work still needs to continue in what we do to get the academic achievement for our students and maximize their potential. There are still, our student experience, just to make sure, sustains and lasts, et cetera. For everyone, right, for all. But I think there's a way to be there, that's kind of what you want to see with the work of the initiative. The walls are ours, and that the brand's going to be very cool. I need to, I think it's very cool. I don't reflect, or you can move too fast, and I, anybody who's good with you, and I write a ton of stuff, I'm like, I have to post it and figure out whatever comes. So maybe I'm, I'm caught up writing a narrative of this situation. But I'll work through it, that's what I'm hoping, and I'll come back to, I'll share, just like we did this communication. Make sure that we're on target with what, that I got to, what we need to do moving forward.
I totally appreciate that we need to put the work of diversity in context, with the work of the district. Maybe taken on a bigger light than, you know, some people expect that it's about its importance in the district. And that it is, I think, one of the many, many important things that we're doing. So I appreciate you thinking around, continuing to remind people that it is one piece of our strategic planning, which happens to be a piece that we're working on, or actively right now, because we started that work last year, but it doesn't make it up, bring out a purpose relative to the other things that are also important.
From what you did, and if you're actually looking for that one thing, you see, again, the plan really definitely, no matter who I talk about, like, what issue, what piece of this planning, there is so much passion in this community for the wellbeing of our students. And if we keep that as our focus, everything else will fall into place. But you're right, there is a lot of importance during keeping our students at the forefront. I don't think we're as far apart as I think. As long as we grounded in the right, that's, that's our, that's our communication provided. Anything else? And just, I'll wrap this, these changes up a little bit, our topic might about looking through how we can get links to books and charts, and then hopefully it can be all be completed.
I just get a little bit.
District goals, or, sorry. So district goals, we have the resident, the DLT, if they get on the 13th, 17th of September. And then those district goals, who would flesh out the action plans and make sure that the goals are on to give DLT, the new teams, the leadership team, that's going to be able to be district leadership. To go through. It's just when you're doing this work, the people who actually have to execute the work, have to believe in it, and you need their input, and they're in that. So before we clarify goals with you, and you need, and how to translate them in your car, like, have a chance to meet with the DLT, if you have a pre-visit. So if I can have that time, I think it's going to be more valid. And then by October, next, with all the valises, I would just have, how are we usually presented? Maybe the principals need more, I can present, so that's what our directions would be. Not just the district goals based on several sources that they would be.
Our junior team, be prepared to be on the same timeline that we're in. Most of the in-depth, that will be integrated with the department. But you have, right, so one of the, are we talking about two administrative goals or just about our individual goals or just about the district goals? Okay, because we are, we have two separate meetings, we would need to do a work session. And then regularly, if we're going to this session. I'm here to share. Second. It's ready.
Yes.
Sorry. Yes, it's ready, yes. Spittle, yes, so cool, yes. It's ready.
Yes.
Sorry, yeah, spittle, yes, right, yes, so cool, yes.
Hey, first item on the agenda, have approval minutes for August 2nd.
I'll leave the motion to, to August 2nd, I'll just level. I'll say.
Discussion.
Um, the capital planning committee, I don't, I actually read the report, because it's on there that this, Jill went through and watched the video and summarized. And then this is already set for the action coverage, so I will update that, we sit, Jill's on a patient, so we can just very drawn with, what she has to do, so. I will update that with the action report.
And that's on, which one of the people?
Uh, Capitol Center. They're ready. Oh, they want to, yes, sorry.
Anything else? Okay, it's pretty well, can you say your role?
It's ready.
Yes.
Sorry, yes, spittle, yes, right, yes, so cool, yes.
Okay, next we have four, three updates, and Mr. Wu for I committee and board policy committee.
No report for I committee. Uh, for our policy committee, uh, the committee vets August 13th, and we do the policy that for House School Law Association, Policy Service, since, which is our policy consultant, recommended via their most recent, not most recent, now, that may ensure the policy developed to court if they uh, the adjustments that our committee has recommended are on for adoption, I mean, first reading at tonight's, leaving later in the agenda. Uh, the August policy bill reportedly came out on Monday, uh, with lots of reading to do, and there's a webinar, I think, September 16th. So I'm expecting that maybe we'll have another policy committee leaving late September or the end of it. And that could be my report.
Okay, uh, Sturley for the business advisory committee, capital planning, board finance, and what?
Okay, so there's no, no report for business advisory. For capital planning, tonight we are going to hear a presentation from Ben Design Architecture regarding the first steps to take place before we do the design process of the bus garage facility. Um, and then the board capital planning committee meeting has been scheduled for September 26th, 28th at 4:30 PM in the Sam's Community Room. And we'll be reviewing district projects and priorities for this coming year, I would assume, including the bus garage and possible maintenance facility. For board finance and budget planning, we don't have a meeting scheduled, but I assume that Ash has been wanting someone to be seen for the update to the forecast. So we'll be, probably have an update on that, I see.
And for record attention, we have a couple of work. Move on to the number of minutes for, so.
I think tonight we just have Ryan Schmidt presenting about. Long time no see.
Yeah.
Yeah. See you personally.
Putting my face as soon as I.
Have you met the board of five?
I have not.
All right, just.
We're fortunate enough.
Is there any way to email us that somebody's nearby?
It's, it's actually moved back to, uh, so you guys have, shouldn't have access.
In there, you can hold. I'll have it with CNN. You're fine.
All right, um, thank you all. I'm going to talk to Mr. So, my name is Rajat TDA, Art Culture. Unfortunately, I have to work within the district, um, handful of projects, including master plan. Pretty introduction of who we are, because some people aren't familiar with us. Uh, especially with COVID situation, a lot of FaceTime is being lost every half a process, so. Give a brief presentation. Uh, typical, this is basically the agenda for our, don't worry, it's who we are, and we've already found out the existing transportation facility and maintenance facilities. Um, and I'll talk a little bit about, I've had a little quarrel from a timeless standpoint and a young process. Uh, TDA, it's a seven-year-old firm, we do lots of schools, that's some of our brand ladder work. Uh, we do work all across Northeast Ohio, um, like I mentioned, we've done work, each brand we've done work in, in each room and Orange and all of, basically, the school districts that are in this today, as well as all the way out in San Jose. Uh, and as far out as this, uh, Ashula and all those areas. So that's what we do, we're a big firm, we've got a great staff, but we should focus on education as a primary. Uh, it's all the very first stuff as well, so we also do athletic facilities and presentation facilities and offices and all those sorts of things, uh, that go along with schools. Uh, our staff, like I mentioned, it's over sixty professionals, and we got a lot of people with various, uh, kind of focuses, I guess, if you will, I mean, people that are very strong in body promotion, we have very solid, um, marketing and kind of community outreach, uh, right now. Uh, there's lots of videos, the whole COVID experience that we're all going through, that was the only way to reach out to people a lot of the time. So we did a lot of videos, uh, kind of digital experiences and virtual meetings and things of that nature. Um, we have obviously architects and interior designers, I also have a really strong construction. Um, our work event, you can see some ventures, some of the work we've done, but it's everything private school, it's, we're more exposed to higher ed and things of that nature as well, so. Basically, from preschool all the way to graduate. Um, this is just a kind of a timeline where we've been, state, uh, we do, we're fortunate about, in 2018, started process of doing master plan. Um, Dr. Falls has also been really good at, um, doing in-depth kind of research issues to, you know, offer and forecast and what's going to need to be done, but it's also looking at, uh, you know, kind of vision for how we want to transform and kind of goals that, uh, with the times, really improve our district. More than just doing, kind of capital improvement techniques, things of that nature. So that process is really, uh, a meeting where we, not with a, a big group of students and staff and, and administrators and people of the district. We talk about some wants and needs within the district, when it's that little, the list of value markets and associated prices, that one, that one building, renovation projects, but also capital improvement projects. Uh, and kind of display the time, the group, it was recommend, display the timeline. Uh, the first step in that was the transport project, switched to the place, uh, last year, wrapped up, uh, renovation, basically, where the old transport is at Ben, and what it means to turn the stores, the new store and various stuff. Uh, this summer, we're working on exterior lighting, drugs, uh, campuses at the high school and middle school, but also a lot of the tree. And that's changing, I'll, I'll lay the lights, you know, the ground textures. It should work, right? Nothing's working well tonight, but it should work. There we are. So, and then the roofless project, like I mentioned, it's a really good job of coming forecast and building programs in place. That's the right way to do it, so that you don't have to do all of your rigs at one time, but you're continually meeting in groups. And so we go out and look for the sections that need replacement first, we work on and replace those sections and then moving on to the next area. But that way, you spread out your timeline so that you're not ever hit when all those warranties come due, and you need to do roof replacements again, it's not all at the same time, so it's a very good process.
Right, I know your question. Sure. Relatively new approach of the district because we are committing funds on a regular basis, helping to come, do a better job of our, keep the right, our larger, our, our, to better maintain our facilities over time. And we brought to the area the challenge of, you know, some of this maintenance work will be occurring over the course of the next five, 10, 20 years. And then we also want to be able to, where, where it fits, dovetail, and if there are improvement projects that benefit the student experience in schools, let's do those at the same time, so that will take advantage of the finances wise.
Very well, and it's also that sometimes we have a better eye for efficiencies too, and when a project would be most advantageous to occur. So that's something you don't want to, for example, do a new roofing project, you can go back and drop a lot of, a lot of gray out. So, I mean, so it's kind of things we talk, we have process and make sure it looks aligned as best as possible, so. Thank you. Um, and where we're moving into now is, we're kind of heading towards a maintenance and transportation project. Uh, that was in the master plan, kind of as the next item that it's, uh, we're looking to dagger. That process, if we're looking at a summer 2022, 2022, uh, kind of construction schedule, that's what I'm going to be presenting tonight. Obviously, if things shift one way or the other, or rules or something like that, change one way or the other, that would just kind of alter that timeline. But this is really a way to have, just as we can handle, topical process every few minutes. Um, just some of the existing conditions, again, the district has been really proactive in making sure that maintenance items get taken care of. They've done a really good job of, you know, those type of things that kind of pop them around the window, those, those type of things that are necessary to keep a building functional and operational, that kept it in place. The issues that we have with our transportation are primarily related to construction out here. Uh, that building is small, it's, it's essentially got one end and worn out, all the buses, so if something breaks down, it's all very difficult to be much more open there. Uh, it's very cramped, limited storage, limited space for drivers, limited space for staff. Uh, and then the backyard, back, when you're busted apart, is just the need to repair, that's on the table list of improvements that we've been talking through. This is one of those that when we're looking at, well, when do we do this paving at, at bus garage? It came up, well, if we're doing a bus garage, that would be the time to do the paving for that, so that those two pieces align. Um, maintenance facility, this is another one we're looking at, this is like a go of high school campus, uh, it's kind of perched up on a little hill, just, uh, I guess, in the southwest, or southeast, I guess, of the main school. Um, this is again, it's a converted music room, uh, back in the day when, uh, high school was originally built, it was built as a series of small buildings that were not connected. Uh, over time, most of the buildings were all that connected, but the music building, uh, was out on its own. Uh, over time, the floors have been built in and has been converted to a maintenance facility, but as you can imagine, a music room is not, you know, the most efficient place for that type of activity to take place. Uh, it's got limitations based on factors, tiers and there's storage of things and access, you see a big, kind of one back side of the building, it's, it's very limited and it's, it's very difficult. Staff does a good job of what they have, but it's, it makes it a bit more difficult to drive. Um, in addition to that, there is some storage and some maintenance equipment that gets placed back behind the, the main grandstand, and some of that, that equipment could be more effective in this place. So what we talked about, uh, then, this is almost too good to go at this point, uh, we had done a study, what that building could be based on the most, basically, it's a, what we eventual, you know, maintenance transportation. And this plan was kind of the result of that. Uh, this is not a design, this is purely a concept plan, it's just initial kind of pricing, initial kind of time, duration studies, things of that nature. But really what it did was it took one day for the buses and provided two whole days, provided a bunch larger rooms, uh, for staff and storage, uh, and it combined maintenance and hand transportation. Uh, in one facility over at the current campus, so then you get those efficiencies of storage, uh, building instruction, one location, uh, utilities, et cetera, et cetera, all taken in one building. Um, the budget, I'm not going to, it's, it really depends on scope, so that's something that we have, wholly defined, we have kind of a linear scope. So depending on what type of equipment ultimately wants to go inside, and ultimately wants to go outside, things can be a little up or down with the budget there. Uh, and then our market is pretty, uh, pretty wild right now, just availability of materials and things of that nature. Been pretty terrible in the last six, eight months, uh, it's mostly related to labor force and availability of materials, so that's kind of what we're seeing, so. But those are a different project. Uh, this is kind of the duration, uh, of how this project working out, a timeline, if you will. Uh, it's a duration line, and I have a timeline to blow it, which, uh, timeline is basically dependent on when this would actually start, by putting in, uh, September, uh, start time. Uh, assuming that their first process would start in September, and it kind of drags out to the end of project, which would be the end of the chart. Durations just are listed so that if this moves one way or the other, um, depend on how field or what each of those spaces would take from, uh, time. But really what you're looking at, the thing we're talking about most of tonight is the creative design activities, uh, that's really just survey, geotech and programming. Survey and geotech are two processes, uh, that are really important when you're starting to follow. Um, the survey gives you a real idea of, of the quality and all the existing norms that exist up on that site. Uh, we have a rough, you know, honestly, when we go out there and see what's out there, but until you get, you know, a form idea of what your, you know, elevation from one one to another is, and you can see, you know, what their enhancements or locations, utilities and all that stuff's put on paper, that will affect the design. And then geotechnical study, that's when they take these, these drills, they drill down into the ground, they blow up some dirt, they check their compaction, they check and see where water table is, they check all those things. So that when you get an engine construction, not, but then surprises, fewer surprises, uh, as to making the ground and the connotations and things that would be required to build like this. Um, luckily, we're in a narrative, it's usually not a big deal, so, uh, but it's always best to do that due diligence and do those, those processes. Uh, right now, survey and geotech, uh, all those companies are very busy, so that's one thing that, whether you start around, start later with us, or how that works. I'd recommend doing those, that won't change much, so your survey won't change at all, or geotech changes, only the water table really changes and the geotechnical study. So I'd recommend getting those processes started. Uh, programming can start whenever, but if you start, I think, from a, if we're trying to start that next year timeline, to start that sooner rather than later, that gets us more time to kind of work in some that, and really get good to the overall, and it starts, uh, I don't want to do these. Um, the other thing, but that's a tendency to grab down on the bottom, dollars and doing that. I think I'm on, kind of layering was, when we first start a project, we can design to budget, or we can design to, uh, scope. So you give us a scope and you say, how much is it going to be, or you say, it was going to be twenty, what can we get with that? And so that first step, we're kind of in the middle of this, trying to figure out, you know, between us, what we want ultimately this project to be. Is it towards a dollar figure or is it towards a scope? Is it towards a dollar figure or is it towards a scope? And then as you go through the process, as you go through the process of programming, meeting with facility advisors, meeting with directors and all those sorts of people, you get a stronger and stronger idea of what that project is from a scope standpoint and a budget standpoint. And you, you need it in the middle before the, and so ultimately, when we're in that kind of documentation phase, I'm not going to, I was talking a quick spot this the other day, I'm not going to document something that I feel is wildly out budget. We wouldn't do anybody any, but still, we want to make sure as we're going through that, we're working through that process to hit that market that's, you know, most desirable for this report and.
Brian, can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
And this may have happened before I was on the board, so let me know. Has the decision been made officially that we're going to move the maintenance piece and that's definitely done? Or are we looking at also pricing it out with just the bus garage for the two bays without moving?
Those are perfect questions. I don't have that answer. No, nothing said in scope. This is, we basically provide our proposal with an assumed dollar figure because that's how it's done essentially.
Okay.
And depending on how we move this up and down, we can, we can adjust and we can move with, with that in order to get that process going. This first phase is really identified that. That's really what this is intended to do. It's basically a conceptual design phase. And so that's, that's very clear.
The board, the board needs several more conversations around that too, because the preparation and the beginning of the facility app came about during part of this process after the board was last engaged in what this project would look like and how much it would cost. So I understand that there are similarities in the basic issue, season to have all of that at one campus. But I also think we have to get in the mindset that we are going to have to do things along the way that are not the best we can do because we have to pay attention to every dollar we spend. And so the question that I would want to discuss more with the board is, if we were to spend extra money to put all of that up at the earnings, is there a use for that building on the high school campus that serves such a value to our students that we feel comfortable saying, let's do this before we tackle one of the high school wings that needs to be updated? Or let's do this before we make a major design change at the earnings? Because we're hearing from our building principals that those projects are also important and big and worthy, and those are the next things to be discussed at the bus garage.
I completely agree with everything you said, that one thing I do remember is, we always like to come to this kind of discussion and we look for all, all the questions we might have and all the needs we have. And I don't want to go into any frequency notions, we, oh, we can't afford the maintenance part. Well, maybe it's not a full maintenance piece, but maybe it's more storage for maintenance items over at that campus or things of that nature. We need to, I think, really nail down what all the problems are and then we can determine what the.
And to bring it up now because it's actually a question for our administration, because the question comes like, is there a value to having that building accessible to students? Like is there something that are, any, any one of the building administrators feels like, wow, that is something you have really been wanting and needing and now see that space solving a great for me and, I don't know, that's not ours answer, so.
But I think we can, get that to the top of our planning and not to detract, because I think that's a really important element, but we have a process in place for prioritizing projects based on need and what's coming up in construction. So I think we need to revisit the prioritization. Let me start by saying, I fully support beginning geotechnical side work and I think that's a very smart way to go. The timeline, I would amend, I propose taking the data because with construction costs being what they are, I think we are targeting around 2024 for this to happen. And so I wouldn't want anybody to infer we're going to build it in the spring, but we know that we need to do this work now, so we have no surprises. And then we know how long each phase is going to take us into the future. And unless something changed, I don't think we have an urgency to have this done in the spring. So we're going to optimize our finances and do it when we can do it the most fast effectively without, you know, taking away from the capabilities of the.
Yeah, and quite there is one that, the timeline, the reason I put that in there, sometimes people make the use, just the duration pieces, you know, how those two line up. So that was the intent of that. I think, I mean, to apply.
And I just think sometimes people look at slides after and they don't put it in context of what was said. So I just want to be really clear that we are not intending to do this project in the spring. So that said, I fully support engaging tonight and moving forward and we can vote on that as a word. And I, I'm glad we have this couple of planning meetings set up because what we really do need to look at, my impression is that this, the drawing presented of maintenance was based on designing to a scope and not designing to a budget. It was kind of a, wouldn't it be great if you could do all of these things? And I think now we need to step back and say, and my perception is that it added about a million dollars to the project to add the maintenance project to be brought, so we'll come back together on that. And I will want to know, is that the best way for us to spend that million dollars? Or would it be better spent on another high priority project? And those are the, that's exactly why we have this committee, to, to go through all of that and kind of wrap it back together. So you've done a great job, you've really helped. And I know oftentimes when clients, things go in circles a little bit. I do personally, but we can bring the scope and the budget together and be really clear about what we want to achieve now for what budget.
And that's, that's what this first pre-design activities is. That's establishing what our budget wants to be. And then in the meantime, we're going through that, that programming phase where we're saying, okay, we don't have enough rooms to store our.
I would say it's actually what we want our budget to be, not what our budget wants to be.
Fair, fair. We have a question. Um, this is, this is, thank you. This was the question. Any questions?
Thanks, Brian. We were talking about you, but I think this is important. And you always respond really well and I get that the next usual, we'll kind of dig into that and look at the trade offs and then hopefully give you the one question I have for you and I don't think we prepared tonight, is, when do you need the board to take action on the scope and the budget so that when we do engage with that next phase after the site work is done? So is it before I pull the trigger on phase two there?
Yeah, I mean, we really want to have the budget and kind of scope.
But in advance of when we want the project done?
Um, not, it's not, no, because like in the project, you're saying the construction duration is six, eight months.
Okay.
And then you've got a month or two for bidding and basically going through remaining process. And then three to four months for designing. So if you're looking at the worst case, it's, yeah, it's a year, a year and a half months. So it's, it's a, it's a healthy process. I mean, it takes a long time to get through all of that, but it's just the steps. And right now, that six, eight months, that's really based on what we've been seeing for delivery of some of these materials, so.
But I don't know, I really feel like we are on to meeting again, or is on this one? We've talked about this project for a couple of years and I don't think we have any, well, we'll, we'll have some information, but I do feel like we as a board can give you that direction in the next couple of months. Whether or not we pull the trigger on the, we have the whole project, we'll, we'll be able to talk it out. I think it comes from planning and come back to the board shortly after that.
And then the other thing we know is the next part, we go through the whole program phase is to establish any sort of kind of plans and we could bid certain things at all times as we go through this process. So if it's something that we do wind up in a better bid climate and do get, you know, better bidding, I'll get maybe a few buys and some of the targets we talked and still fit with me, what that budget has to be. So I'm more than open for that. So, any other questions?
Yeah. Brian, so the management fee that's five, right?
Yes.
How much are like the services?
Typically seventy percent of construction.
Well, I think I want to, Phil, I want to ask a question of one of our state clients, which is, Chris. The contract, we sent this contract out to the construction council. Have we done that?
What's that?
Have we sent this contract, this initial M L A or whatever, calling it, to construction council?
Yes, our legal counsel, yes. Is that your thing?
Yeah, construction, construction arms.
Right.
Yes, yes, our construction legal counsel, yes.
Okay.
Specifically David Riley, our construction council. Who did this revised contract that this, I think the date's the thirteenth of August. This, and, you know, we took a look at, this is a $5,000 contract for a few big services entering the pre-design work. And we, the district are buying directly, the survey and the geotech, and we're paying for that. They are soliciting bids for us for that work and they are managing that work. They're taking results of that work and then providing a, I guess, you know, the conceptual design, which is how we're choosing.
Because it always makes people a little nervous when there's a percentage of cost fees to the contract or the fee is based on a percentage of the ultimate cost. Because there's not a huge incentive, not that this would be potentially, but you want the incentive to be, keep so as small as we need, or just what we need to build more. And the price as low as we can keep it, no more than that.
Yes, and as the old contract, I know that the scope, the, the cost was based on, maybe a $2 million construction cost was fixed regardless of the actual construction cost. So then fix what it is. And, and we haven't brought that part of the contract to this board meeting. We would bring that back probably maybe November, December, depending on the results of when we can get all this pre-construction stuff done. So we would bring back to the board the actual contract we've signed.
So just telling me, sure, we heard, so tonight we all were approving a $5,000 management fee and then we'll be paying separately for the site work, et cetera. So it's nothing based on a percentage in the contract we're approving tonight.
But we have a document, we're approving this document.
The document should have our percentage. Or if it does have the percentage, it doesn't have the budget. Before we engage in the next contract, we're going to set the budget and the scope. So we'll be saying when that percentage is up, what dollar amount we're targeting.
Okay, I just want to be super clear, but we, we have had construction council review the document.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not talking about this other contract.
This specific document and there was the resolution that you're approving that's linked to the, so the resolution you're signing is linked to the document after it was reviewed and negotiated with the.
So we're going to have room if we decide that the scope is not going to be to remove the maintenance stuff because we don't think there's a ceiling boost for the maintenance building there, we're going to keep it there. We're going to make it smaller and it's not going to be that drawing, it's just going to be two bays. But that would be a percentage effect. Because I drove all over and I looked at bus garages and it was kind of interesting. It was, some of them are just pallets, you know? And some of them are just cinder block, even brown with the steel in it. They wouldn't necessarily correlate, in some districts you may go there and have a pallet and have a cinder block building. So I'd like to make sure we have the opportunity to exercise that.
We do, and we wouldn't even have to utilize T V for the science services for the building if we didn't want to. And I hate to say that publicly from you, but that's true. That's we didn't like the work.
Right.
Yeah, and so, but you know, our legal counsel is sort of the same gentleman who also worked with us on this as well, to this, kind of an adaptive process as well.
I, I would want to say too, when you get into that analysis of that, the building that's currently over on high school campus, if you want my input on any of that, if you have the, we can talk through that as well. I mean, that's something that as we've talked through the overall master plan, maybe we could work through some of those things and see how some of these pieces can move on campus. So, nothing else, just another set of highlights.
That would be great because you were so really involved in that whole origin.
That's why I don't want to, don't want to just push that away.
Right, yeah. Yeah, you're very, I mean, that's one of the reasons why we really enjoy, we want to get the best for our money and to make sure that we're focused on our priorities. So that's the whole reason why this contract was amended before, so that it allows the board to take action on the scope and the budget that then will be put into the next phase of the contract.
True.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you all for listening. Thank you.
Oh, and I did want to just recognize, in fact, this is more than for me here as well or education.
Thank you. Purpose of the board meeting meetings is for boards and directors' business. Board meetings are held in polls but are not public forums. Special agenda, I don't start attending among board members, not special public. Public participation section of the attendance, opportunity for citizens to address the board, community members to contact the superintendent and advance the meeting, they provide an opportunity to speak first. Public comment is limited to thirty minutes. For participant will have thirty minutes to speak. No person may speak twice until all desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Remember, this is a formal and official meeting of board of participation. And what you say becomes part of the official meeting of course. If your comment calls from a student, employee or board member, please not address them by name. Keep in mind here in meetings in the schoolhouse, classroom, presence of students. At this time, the primary role of the board of education is to listen and reflect in comments. Finally, your board attorney, if you have a stupid question, please go email our superintendent, Jennifer, that is our meeting agent, please stop forward. So this time, I think there's three million people list. I do. Brian, do you have this?
I do. First person is Christina Lopez.
Like before, you know, the last couple of meetings, we now need a timer here to the person speaking and everybody else.
For the past few meetings, I've heard transexpressor concerns are mass, especially to academic and social emotional development. To me, these concerns are a lot of perfectly apparent as autistic women compared to autistic children, navigating a world of masks, challenging the whole state. One of my kids would begin to express in her recital speech today, while I'm changing a method as I hold this, it can impact his progress in expression forms in obedience. With self-speech therapy for a while and unsuccessfully attempted virtual reading, as do our social interactions with parents, we could learn. And now in school, wearing more of masks, we need to have a lot of opportunities to learn about formations for sounds and also facial expressions to help prevent negative social interaction. This is not a regular situation. We vary greatly amongst the quality of practice in school than the majority of the student population. However, we're in the middle of a global pandemic and in the face of that, we have to compromise, adjust, and hope for creative solutions. Right now, below us schools are significantly compromised. Something that has been common expected at established practice, religious, all the differences. The CDC looks at aggregate data from all the related research on any given subject to make these recommendations. In addition, we have families with community compromised members of our schools, families with children who have the same rights for parent or parent patient as well. Families whose children may require in first instruction just as mine. So with that, we compromise, we adjust, we get creative. We listen to the league of science, we follow C D C guidelines. I've been struggling to understand how so many in the community come to these meetings in part in order to ignore science, but the very face they're sending up is to honor. I want to commend the schools for their work so far navigating this difficult times. I hope that one day we'll be able to look back at the impressive methods of the Catholic Public Creative Day innovation that went into this difficult period. I hope they continue policy as we advance and keep masks in the schools until we get it right.
Next up is Dana Ford, who is. I am here because of the implementation of the FIVE, a sales standard presented by Jennifer Bango three weeks ago. You all know that my daughter and I spoke and something that was really, on my heart after the fact was that sales standard and masking. And Jennifer, I mean, we did some several backups, but I'm also here to support our children's education. And education seems to be a broad statement these days and what actually means. I'm representing a variety of citizens that have concerns and have asked questions that haven't been answered. I do not believe the board should vote to approve that program until there's then the review of their, triggering policies should not accept a program in its pilot stage, quote sample lessons, assembly reviewing materials, thus our ability on toward, that's not what I'm thinking. We already have response classroom and through the D I H A, specifically equity is initiated starting after 2019. And are you discussing adding some, you have to, slowly, it seems academic and scientific are more. And I know that after talking to Dr. Kuzarski, that's why you can't, it's for academics and strong academics. And we as a community want to support you how we can. Jennifer Bacon said the cost would only be $1,000 and the change. Jennifer Bank said the cost would only be one thousand dollars, and the change toward it to save the initial costs of people to pass the dollars for the FIVE. You can understand my apprehension when it comes to funding programs and transparency within our school board and community. This bank, oh, I think might be getting pressured into accepting a program, and I'm not sure who it's coming from, but I know that our community and children deserve better. Why are we looking to purchase a program that's not really developed or tested for effectiveness? And why is Sugar and Fall so great to be of anything or have a trial on our children? I think we can all agree our school system is successful and academic excellence, and that's why we live here. Our teachers need our support so much to help our kids succeed in our core academics in order to be competitive in the real world and not continually fall by other nations. Thank you.
First up, Jessica Allen. Hi everyone, I'll tell you, I do speeches for work all the time, I just get nervous. We bring my kids into it, I'm a little blurry. So, um, I'm Jessica Mary Allen. I live in Miami, I'm from South Side. I was raised here in Sugar Falls, school. My husband and I were here twelve years ago to raise our kids here. After a very happy and good childhood in Sugar Falls, I left and spent a decade out of the world and realized that Sugar and many small, t- if communities like our, have some limitations. And where that and everything are kids here, they would not understand their greater place in the world. So I believe that the benefits of living here out there in the grass, and my Sugar Falls education, using one hand, informs nearly everything I do, both personally and professionally. If we are at these halls, then I must have taken criticism. I believe our country and our community are prioritized personally, of our nation, to care with each other. Sometimes professionally, we believe that we have the right to talk about those of the greater good. To me, this is very dangerous thinking. The betrayal in language and accusations at our board meetings over the last few months are not who we are in this place. Nor are we people who tie our banners to five reps over our talent as our excited kids walk to school for the Thursday, and a wonderful teacher started another painful and challenging school year. I disagree with things that's worn us down over the years, but I reach out to you each time and I challenge to invite you over here and professional with us. Nothing has ever been hidden. I've been on one committee or board as a sugar and parent for more than a decade. I can tell you that in every discussion I ever attended with our board members, our administrators, or our teachers, the wellbeing of our kids, of my kids, to their campus center. I want to thank the board for providing masks in these buildings. But the mom, it's been way more years of my life, but I'd like to remember twenty weeks in town to keep my kids from choking. We've had bike helmets, a surf and a kale. They still yell, look, look, I love them, when they cross the street, even though they're taller than me. From the moment I became a parent, I saw the mountains between my, my kids, find their own path and pursue their own independence, make their own choices, while also finding ways to help protect them from bigger things, from their reputation of our own. This is precisely what a mask does. It provided critical way of protection for my children, and saw a time when our world is back to the status quo, and COVID ended, and it will be in a new year. It may not be a new, but they work and frustration developed, but we're in one of our small places to pay for healthy kids. Please know that despite we've stolen across our scars of wet failures, or skewed from Facebook pages and podiums like this, keeping our kids in masks until their dad tells them it's safe to stack is critical. If you're listed, I can say that I hope the district will also require them, at least short term in the older grades, especially if Cape Town's high. I hope that option remains over suitable. To my fellowship in the online, parents, neighbors, and friends, let us not forget who we are here in this place that we're so lucky to have as our home. This is an incredibly challenging time to be a parent, let's take it care of.
And I'm inviting myself just wanting to speak from my heart. Marilyn White, five seven three, Silver Road. Mostly, I really want to thank and commend my school board for its courage, its listening, its willingness to really hear all sides, to answer the questions, and are out there to correct the misinformation, to be patient, to take the process through, whatever that takes, and it does take time, Jennifer, three. So I'm just, I'm really grateful for all of that, and I don't think it's been easy for you, um, to take the kind of criticism and accusations that have come, but I also realize it's not easy for the people who are giving the accusations that they're afraid of certain things, and they have certain confirmation bias. And for those who don't know about confirmation bias, I heard a wonderful talk last night from someone who used to be a prosecutor for years, and till he saw that the DNA evidence was proven by someone who had been in prison for fifteen years was innocent. And he started to research, he started to open his mind, because before he was just saying his own confirmation bias, those people are liberal, you know, um, they don't know what they're talking about. And then he started to learn, and he long ago, he became a defense attorney for people who have been wrongly convicted. And I, I tell that story because I think we can all have confirmation bias. We already decided in our minds what is right and what is not right, and what we, you know, what we should fight for, instead of listening and, and finding the truth and finding what the facts are. Not what's in YouTube videos, but what is science that we've counted on all these years to protect us. So I commend you for following through with the science of protecting our children, protecting our community, our ex-occupant team, my husband has diabetes. We can't get covered, and yet our grandchildren could be exposing us. And I commend you again, deep thanks. And I really hope that we can confront the confirmation bias that we may all have, but the truth is, Sugar and Falls with all its wonderful edutais and loving ear, also has been referred to for years as a bubble. And we know that because so many people who come of color or differences end up not staying because they don't feel welcome. And people are generally not get the gift of exposure. It's terribly, so I really hope you'll follow through with the D I J, with the D I J. Thank you.
Beth Mulvaney. Senator, should I address the board? Okay, good afternoon. My name is Beth Mulvaney, I'm in ten six nine Sugar Drive. Any concern regarding the books that have been assigned to our children? Several months ago, a request for reading list assigned to our children, but was never provided though. By scouring the school's website, we're eventually able to find partial summer reading lists. In the past, parents of white community are level of trust in regards to the materials their children are exposed to. But in recent times, we can no longer assume these materials are benign. Upon further research, I noticed that some of these reading lists directly align with books found on the young adult, the Ellen movement list. The Black Lives Matter movement is very controversial, not for the idea that life is precious, but for the Marxist philosophy it promotes, including the dissolution, dissolution of the family union. Beelam wants to teach our students that America, a representative democracy, is bad. That does not align with most of our values, and certainly not with ours. For example, the Sugar Falls fifth grade summer reading list this year included, from the desk of Zoe Washington. This book aims to teach ten-year-olds that the United States is full of racist people and systematically racist systems. The book states, the jury, the judge, the public, even his own lawyer, they all assume Marcus must be guilty because he's black. It's all part of systemic racism. And I can tell you when it started, it started with the jury. This is the type of agenda-driven information which is being fed to our children on a regular basis at the taxpayer expense. In our house, and I'm, in our house and at the open our schools, we teach children that people are judged by their actions, not by the color of their skin. This book pushes a narrative that will further divide our children by race, instead of teaching them we are all one people. I encourage my fellow parents and community members to pick up a few of these books and decide for yourselves if the messages are appropriate for our students, our children, especially at a young age. There are several more books that were approved by our Sugar and Falls Board of Education that contain common themes of racism, racial profiling, oppression, and marginalization. Wetland, Front Desk, The Fifty Seven Bots, The House on Mango Street, Dear Murder, and Chokehold. There's no need to push this on our children, especially at taxpayer expense. Thank you to four board members, Lee, Ray, and Arithmete, Lee, Chris, and yours. Thank you very much, and welcome. I meant to, I'd be welcome with the beginners.
Beth, sorry, I have a follow-up question. You said that you requested regulations. Who did you make that request out of, and what specific correction were you asking?
I was asking for several things, but one of the specific ones was the reading list of Kurt Ray Hubble, and I asked it of Mr. Howell. And, um, Dr. Kuzarsky responded, which was great, like right away, we just started. But you had said that someone else had answered that, and that was to Enco, and maybe a couple other people.
Actually, for my record, sure, and you know that you have this version, right? Yeah, so I'll find it.
If you did, I apologize. Because I did not receive that, that I saw. But it could have gotten to my junk mail, because I was looking for it.
I'll find it, you said that it would be specifically from my email address, so we actually got it.
Okay, I will look for it, if that's the piece.
I have to apologize.
And I wanted to correct if you have requested something, and you feel like you have a proper follow-up, please do us the courtesy of giving us a call and just following up, except assuming we don't ignore these requests. We do our best to fulfill every single one.
Really?
And then we'll leave your statement that maybe this is really a problem.
Yes.
Um, and then I just wanted to make a comment about, um, the, the book choices that are on the reading list and just support our teachers. I think we talked at the last four meetings about our curriculum review process, and that it's very robust with our director of curriculum and the teachers that we all know and trust, who have such great expertise in working with our kids. And they give us the recommendation that they feel is appropriate for what we need to achieve, um, within the district. So just to underscore that teachers selected these reading lists, and yes, they are approved by the board, but the board doesn't select them. They're brought to us with a recommendation after a very robust process that involves our staff. I just would, would have had to respond, but I just, actually, I prefer you don't, and it's fun to make that in our organization as well.
I would really like to respond. Um, my understanding was that the D I J initiative that you started, we were not implementing that until a year from now.
I'm sorry.
Back up to speed. And so the reading lists are reflective of the D I J initiative, in my opinion.
Actually, but they.
That's my, that's my concern, because it seems like it's ticking off. And I have a meeting here to get, to get the news or to break it up this week.
Yeah, I can tell you that the reading list came from staff, it didn't come out of the D I R two recommendation. Okay. And thank you for reading the books. Just a general comment to parents, thank you. Like, reading the books is great, we love that you read the books, it's true, please leave go.
Uh, next is Doug Neal. Sorry if I mispronounced that. You got it. Well, hi there, this is Doug Neal from, uh, One Ten A-laws. Everybody hear me? I'll be really brief. I'd like to thank the district and the board for supporting health and safety and taking it seriously. Nobody likes wearing masks, I don't like wearing masks, but a science-based approach is the best approach we have to improve this pandemic, and likewise, I'd like to remind the entire community, or even the word pandemic means all people, agree? So it's not just about ourselves, it's about protecting our neighborhood as well. So again, thank you.
Karen Calabrese. Hi, my name is Karen Calabrese, I live at seven zero six seven Pine Street. Um, I just want to say a quick thank you for everyone about masks, and thank you for having us all here today. I'm ready to encourage and support you to continue your work developing the diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice, justice initiative begun last year. Um, your open and inclusive process is being attacked by a very loud minority of institutions, but without any substantive concerns identified, what is it that the opponents exactly oppose? They don't really know, it seems, but they know they oppose it, and loudly. Cherry pick stories from a couple of school districts are trotted out because they're as little of for nothing that the opponents can object to, aside from the very ideas of D I J. As you and everyone involved in education knows, equity is not a Marxist idea, but rather a tried and true framework to help all of our students succeed, whether that success is founded in college graduate plus courses, or through tutoring and summer catch-up programs. I E Ps and advanced placement classes are commonplace, because educating all students to the best of their capabilities is nothing but the concern of equity. It seems it is only now that some people worry that equity might extend to historically marginalized, um, groups, that it has suddenly become controversial. We also hear from these critics that promoting diversity is in fact racist and absurdity. In a homogenous community like ours, diversity is in fact both a matter of justice and of education. I applaud, for example, those responsible for choosing the fifth grade summer reading list this year, which included four award-winning novels by authors of color showcasing diverse protagonists and their experiences. It is well documented that providing points of identification, representation, and positive examples can greatly increase historically excluded students' engagement and success in school. In addition, in our homogenous community, it is crucial that majoritized students understand that their experiences are dramatically different than those of most of the people who live in our originally diversification and world, and that they learn the empathy and understand that fiction and the appreciation of diversity are especially able to cultivate. I hate that you hear the more than five hundred and sixty families and family members of Sugar and schoolchildren who signed a letter in support of D I J. If each of those signatories had come to speak for three minutes, this meeting would need to run for more than twenty-eight hours. Please do not let a vocal minority derail the discussion. Please do not let a vocal minority derail the district's important work to improve Schrader Falls schools by enhancing diversity, equity, inclusion, and inclusion.
I've got several people who have spoken, who have written comments, and I do not like them to put me in a way that's more important. Don't really leave me, and I will put others. I think mine were mailed too, so. Oh, okay, good. Next is Erin Welch. This is the last one.
Well, I have two children, and of course, I'm true. We have three children, and when K2 dropped into Red Falls and our crowd graduates, and all three of them are very interesting in the issues in our schools and how their school is handling diversity and homelessness. I want to thank the school board for being very professional in handling some kind of ugly things that happened over the summer. We've gone a lot of summer, and I'm shocked to see some of the things. And we earn our respect by the way we handle it. Community has trusted the school board and the teachers and the administration for years. In the 40 years we've been here, the trust was earned by our work and performance. And I think we burn the benefit of doubt. I know that the standards who committed questions when their schools are doing, given their track record, we burn the benefit of doubt. I regret that Schrader Falls has been dragged into ugly national and state political issues, and that's what's happening. It's what's happening not only here, but in lots of school districts across the state, across the country. And I encourage you to not be overreact to a vocal minority. There's no question that Red Falls are great, their academics are outstanding. That's why we moved here 40 years ago. If there's a weakness, it's the lack of diversity in our community and the challenges that our students have when they meet the level and meet people that are bitter, bitter, and place like Schrader. All of our kids commented on that when they went to college. They said, "Schrader is great," but we don't really know how to deal with some of these people. They've never really dealt with people like that anymore. So I commend school for addressing these issues. I thank you for having students wear their masks. And I look forward to seeing what you come up with, right after the judge and till we actually come up with a plan. As an adult, I know that new ideas can scare us, and our students aren't like that. Students like new ideas, they like challenges, they like to think. And they can evaluate a new idea, they want people evaluating for them. And I think we need to give our students a little bit more credit. Schools have always had a lot of rules to protect harm, protect students from harm. Sporting equipment is mandatory, dress codes, routine vaccines. I'm a bus driver, so I completely like the rules about safe bus activity. Parents have always loved those rules, and the schools have loved them. Now some people want to end the rules that protect people from unknown disease, and they want to replace it with rules that protect students from ideas. I don't quite yet have, but our students deserve that. We as the adults in the community owe our students better than protecting them from ideas. Thank you.
Just to be clear, I'm going to just clarify. Last meeting, you said that anything that was submitted to DEF, we wouldn't read that someone would have to be present to read. So any letter or email that I received, I forwarded to the board, but we won't read those if they are here to be presented.
Especially we have is sent to the I-7A7A.
How's that going? Schrader. Yes, Schrader. Yes, this is by those. Yes, this is first, yeah. So, yes.
Hey, thanks for super pen's recommendations. Prepare to meet a page through.
And then, ask second.
First, which student?
Letter A was the presentation that we saw and noted for the first reading. Last word, it was just for the SEO curriculum. And I will tell you that Jen Venko has received many questions, and she answered them very well. So I feel that our process and procedure applies this solidly. The one thing that I hear often that I've been listening to is the question of, are we purchasing a blocked curriculum? And one that's linked to responsive classroom is basically why I was chosen. And I want to say that responsive classroom is the program that they've been doing for, I think, 13 years. So this is linked to that work. And I know that blocks curriculum, I don't want that. But I understand these are curriculum and resources, instructional materials that are Schrader's, and sure, are used. So they're resources for them to develop lessons at Schrader quality. And they're materials that our teachers can have as resources to integrate in the work that they're doing in our classrooms. They don't have facts coming from us. We need to think generally about everything else in your other presentations. But I just want you to understand that we do purchase instructional materials. We do purchase curriculums, but we also hire amazing teachers. And so I just want you to know exactly how to work on it. And understand this, sometimes, especially when something is new, it may not have been tested thoroughly or developed. But I know for a fact, based on talking to Beth, you can't correct her record and talking to Jen Venko, that this district will pivot. So for some reason, this curriculum is not the right fit. And we do, as part of the curriculum process, we do a curriculum evaluation, right? We're constantly gaining feedback, constantly. But if something comes up that we need something different or we find something better, the resources in this area are extremely. So I just want you to know that I trust our teachers. They trust the curriculum process. And even if we have to pivot, I still trust what they presented, at least from what I understand and everything. I just wanted to kind of clarify that, because I heard that a lot. I just wanted to make sure we remember it's just resources with the curriculum that our teachers are using. The letter B is the presentation that we've had submitted. We did a really job, and the PowerPoint you've got have now, it's all nice for that. You should have access if you want to go back and follow up on it. And for a quick second, just a second, we have a last question. The one silver lining, there's more, like silver lining has some common concessions that people are making much more sort of attention to curriculum. And then reading the books and talking about the books in the whole school environment, that's great, and needs to, we need to be discreet and specific with better books. But I'm wondering about still the middle school piece. I just want to maybe state here to be that if we find that something that's working in 1st grade is not working in 7th and 8th grade, we are prepared to pivot away, or especially if it's not challenging enough for us, not academically enough in focus, but we'll really pay attention there. Because I think that's where it's so hard to use curriculums pre-purchased for someplace else and even do that. I think that everything you said is accurate, and that our team are working hard to decide. The other piece, what I think that the entire district is working towards is for vertical alignment, so that this building is doing this thing, this book has, as we do with the middle school. There's a different look at it, maybe the same common thread. But that's why I keep pushing back on you guys in the board saying, what's our directional system, what's our common vocabulary, what's our, how do we define these words? Because until we get down to our performance, that's where we'll be stuck. My thing exists, is that we have to respond. But that's what it is. Great. And then letter C, I can't do better than that.
I have just a couple of comments. I completely want to underscore the trust in our staff and our teachers to know the right type of curriculum for our students. I don't believe my job is whatever, it's just that it's our staff who are the experts. I think they've done an amazing job finding a curriculum in alliance with responsive classroom. And I totally believe when you tell me that they're going to customize this and keep it and continue to work it until it's an ideal product for our students. And then mine, and if anybody else has any more comments on SEO curriculum, you can comment. Just on policy, and Erica, are you going to give a go review? I just want to add.
I would be happy to write an email, everybody.
Great. And I'm expecting, I don't want to put you on the spot. There's just the one about discrimination. When I was looking at the PDQ, which is our quarterly newsletter that fixes updates on policy, I just wanted to call out, and if you'll bear with me, I'm just going to read what they wrote and then set about finding that. On non-discrimination, it's important in their recent guidance regarding Title IX, that earlier this summer, the Office for Civil Rights at the U.S. Department of Education issued an notice of interpretation that affects the rights of transgender students in schools. OCR is responsible for the enforcement of Title IX for the U.S. Department of Education. In the notice of interpretation, OCR interpreted Title IX of the Education Amendments Act of 1972, which prohibits discrimination based on sex and education programs or activities offered by public schools or other recipients of federal funds. The notice of interpretation states that Title IX prohibits 1, discrimination based on sexual orientation, and 2, discrimination based on gender identity. This is a reversal of guidance to schools that was issued by a previous administration. This guidance document was issued in response to the U.S. Supreme Court's 2020 decision, Bostock versus Clayton. In Bostock, the court included the Title VII, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex or employment, prohibits discrimination against a person based on sexual orientation or gender identity. The court concluded discrimination of these bases was discrimination based on sex. The court did not answer the question of whether Title IX protections against discrimination based on sex apply to discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. The OCR notice of interpretation answers that question. In June, the U.S. Department of Education also issued a report on the disparate impacts of education during the COVID-19 hot students. One section of that report focuses on additional challenges that lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, non-binary, and other gender non-performing, in other words LGBTQI+ students face at school, including the disproportionately subjective persistent bullying, harassment, and despectization. OCR's notice of interpretation makes it clear that gay and transgender students have protections guaranteed by Title IX, and that schools should follow Title IX procedures when these kinds of incidents are reported. To accompany the notice of interpretation, the U.S. Department of Education and the U.S. Department of Justice issued a joint fact sheet on confronting anti-LGBTQI+ harassment in schools. OCR updated its resources page for LGBTQI+ students. The U.S. Department of Education also issued a letter sharing these new resources and other information on Title IX protections to educators and other stakeholders. Finally, the White House has issued a toolkit on transgender equality. The first section of the toolkit discusses US DOE supports for transgender students. The toolkit and other resources provided for students and educators by US DOE and the Department of Justice are consistent with executive orders issued for President Joe Biden earlier this year. Executive Order 13988 preventing systematic discrimination on the basis of gender identity or sexual orientation, and Executive Order 14021 guaranteeing an educational environment free from discrimination on the basis of sex, including sexual orientation or gender identity. The reason I mention this is that it has policy implications. The district should ensure that all staff, particularly each district's Title IX coordinator, which I know we have done, are familiar with this guidance, and they're aware that Title IX protections do apply to LGBTQI+ students.
So just your three policies out there.
No, no, our policy happens in non-discrimination policy that says people are not discriminated on the basis of sex, but it doesn't specifically call out the gender identity and sexual orientation are included in that definition, which is fine, because Title IX laws are being applied. And it's important that we all understand that the courts and the department have given us the guidance that, yes, those students are protected under Title IX. And it requires that we're reporting policy in the district. There's a, if there's a violation regarding a Title IX issue, the way we report it to the fellow.
So something will amend the process.
Not at the present time. No, our legal counsel was not recommending it at the present time. Title VII, for sure, has said, if things were ruling to come up that said sexual orientation and gender identity are included in the book's text. Title IX, they did, but now someone's saying, no, they did it to the last case. But policy changes move slowly, because you don't want to make too quickly and do something inadvertently. But even in the August meeting, it came out this week, they're still not recommending implementing that change to our policy.
You're not recommending change in order to have a policy. So it's just to get by.
The terminology says the word prohibits discrimination based on race, color, national origin, ancestry, citizenship, status, religion, sex, economic status, age, disability, military status, or legally acquired genetic information. And that's directly from Title IX. That's, I'm totally happy to back. And also, the guidance that came out of the PDQ was we need to also make sure that administration and our students understand that under the word sex in that definition includes gender identity and sexual orientation. So I just want to make sure we all knew that, and I know we do, because we're totally on top of the Title IX. But I think for the public to know that, for our students to know that they are covered under any discrimination related to those basis of current access. That's what I'm aware of.
I feel like it's important, since you've read it, to just say that since we say you're obligated legally to violate Title IX, as Title IX changes, we change and we pivot and we expand. Do we, to what? We're both supposed to be doing the correction with one, almost. So we have people who violate Title IX, and we know our error. Yes, I haven't totally read the 63-MAQ that basically came out of Month Title IX, I think. But we do know that our two Title IX administrators have worked. Chris Woodford is on and Jen Venko. And they know when they need to implement Title IX.
Thank you for this for the policy.
There's a lot of deep dives that we do as board to, before something comes to the fore, I suppose. So I just wanted to make a clarification, not change the policy.
And just to shout out to our administrators, who, it's not just Title IX, it's the guidance you're stating, the guidance changes constantly. The light, it's constantly moving target, and they do such a good job of making sure that we're applying and we're paying attention to them. And it's all, right. The Title IX changes occurred last July, have immediately implemented by August, and now they're under review again. So we expect more changes.
Or therapy.
Any other policies that you're, yeah, there's one type of, but I think I already mentioned it. I think actually, because I thought it's correct.
Do you have a discussion?
Yeah, I'm afraid we're facing.
It's a record. This is very.
Yes, this is the, yes, this is for, yeah, this is the, yes.
Okay, prejudice representation. Nine A through nine C.
Seven. Second.
I think A is the meeting delegate for the OSBA open access meeting, so we use delegates and an alternate delegate. Anybody would like to call it a theory, but they get nominated.
I was the delegate last year and did the virtual meeting. And two months ago, but it worked okay.
I, I think I'm the only one confirmed who's attending, so I will do it. And I do need an alternate.
If I end up, if I end up going and there's something else that you want to do during that walk of mine. That make up the.
But if you get, if you get sick. I'm not guaranteeing that we all commit that I'm going, but listen.
Now, I, you know, at school where there's each annual meeting, I think it's very interesting. They have, you know, a number of different concurrent topics that are running. They're always pertinent to what's happening right now in our role. So I really enjoy going and continuing that education. So I'm happy to go. The business meeting becomes to be the more boring part of it, but that's okay. Happy to do it.
In relation to that, I have been informed that I have to send the OSBA number ten. I need both, there's some pictures on it, and my niece to get over here for you to prove that this is what we started. I was really concerned about your own agenda this afternoon. I can never get. So lovely, you both live close, I could drop it off to you and decide.
Is Chris, is there a way to enter the office?
There's one, you know, it's just right here.
Just send it, just send it to me.
Let me finish my question, which I know that I would have. Okay, um, I have a meeting as a monthly, trying to report for July. Mike, can you?
Yeah, I'm ready for it.
Quick, I have a thought that I have to see. I have to see the donation from Brent and Lily Self of $300 for the purpose of supporting and supporting diversity at the ECU. So if that was approved by the board, that will be a special cost center within the OET fund to keep it separate from those family-owned federal fund. Then in the future, as activities occur, anyone listening, learn, design, create, process, anything that would require me to do this stuff.
Your head is silent.
Let's see, for the agent reports for July, the actual reports are attached to the agenda. That is what you're actually approving, but I am certain for things in the slides that feel like it has worked enough. It has worked well.
Wow.
So I, I think it's just, these are the same reports I just, I just presented here for you. First report, as always, is the general fund, the summer reports. We only have one month of activity to discuss here, so I don't have a whole lot to call out tonight. Typically, you would see the entire year here, we don't have estimates yet in all of the other ones that occur when the entire forecast's done. So that spending plan will be in there. And then all the, the future months for the entire year will be on here, like we're used to seeing it, it's just nicely on the slide like this. So I just gave you July. And then the fiscal year today, total profits, they are the same as July, because you're on a month it. Second report is the revenue, this is general fund, only nothing too extraordinary to report here. Our first advancement we did receive.
Things with cable, it's just adding minutes a month.
Sorry, man.
Okay.
Okay, well, the first report, and mine is flex, it's actually really great. So I'm, you. We did receive our first advance on our taxes. This kind of fluctuates near a year if you're looking at our bar graph, which I will show you here. You can see the fluctuations in July, and that's because sometimes we get alerts in July and sometimes we don't get it till August. And we do have two counties that we are collecting from as well, so that adds to the public total either. General fund expenditures, this is presented a little bit differently than in previous years. Those salaries are wages in the past, I just broke up by support services. This year, because it's partially just because it's easier for me to run the report and not have to go into some total and add it up, I can just run the report, and already some totals are for me this way. Just breaking it down a little bit further, separating out instructional staff, the OET administration, fiscal, business services, things like that. It's a little bit more detailed there, and it does fix my likelihood in creating it as well. But it's presented the same as they have in the past. Purchase services and supply materials, I'm also going to break down a little bit further this year. The new recording system is, it's taking some time to get accustomed to, but it can do some really great things. It does make some recording much easier, and it's going to save us, my department anyway, it does save us some time as we learn it. And we can give you a little bit more detail on these reports, because it's easy to provide, so pretty good in there.
Actually, if you could back up, change in approach to me, please. I had just gone on that.
Um, I haven't heard a lot about that, I don't know that that would come to me, because I don't really have a lot of base time, but I have.
The students.
Yeah, I mean, it's heard well from the recording side, and it's worked great. I can, you know, really show how much we brought in on each class and how much we spent on it, and, you know, it just creates some greater transparency and detail when people want it. But again, I, you know, if there are comments or questions or complaints, I'm probably going to building level. If there were significant building level questions, hopefully, but I haven't heard anything, so probably not. Next report is the expenditure graph. Again, this is similar to previous years. Now I have three years of history in there, we'll just keep doing that. Going forward, I will use this graph, each divided out by one, orange is the current year. And then over to the right is the year-to-date totals. So you can see our expenditures for July this year were lower than previous year, which was lower than the year before that. We are doing what we need to do to keep them felt as tight as possible and keep those expenditures as low as possible. And following through on all those commitments that we made to communicate what we asked for. General fund cash balance, gray lines are previous three years. I don't have a line, because we're only in July, so I, I took mark on there just so you can see where we are at currently. End of July, general fund cash balance was just over 60 million. That, you knew where we were at the end of June, but still, I do want to point out that is much better than what we thought where, where we were going to be at this point a year ago and eighteen months ago, due to all the federal funds that we got from COVID, expenditures that we thought we were going to make due to COVID that didn't happen, just because supply chain issues got fixed and things like that didn't cost as much as we thought it was going to. So we're, we're in a pretty good position right now compared to our board without COVID. Next report is based on insurance fund. I'm going to keep this line graph here, just so that you can kind of see where we're started and where we are. That gray bar there is the 9.83 requirement that we have to have that amount of reserve that resides on the June 30th. We only get that, that actuary report done once a year. So that will stay till we get, till we get a new one, and then I'll. But we're in another good month, you can see our reserve is 123,000, so that continues to climb, which is, is what we expected to happen, what we wanted to happen. That's how we're going to save money going forward, we won't need increases in our rates. I guess the minimum reserve changed. So the minimum reserve, yeah, it's based on claims, it's based on the number of lives covered, it's based on history. They see some more detail that we don't see as far as what's in the pipeline and what's going to charge over the next three months codes for diagnoses and things like that. Financial summary report for all funds, this is exactly the same as previous year. You'll notice on all of those federal funds there, down at the bottom, those negative balances that we have in here, the revenue that we brought in is exactly what the negative balance was. That's because we submit to the, to the feds, and then we get that reimbursement, we get to see that reimbursement supply. Bank reconciliation for July, I think too exciting there, the same types of bank adjustments that we have almost every month. Positive investment report, pie graph there just shows where our money is, most of it's still in Star Ohio. Interest rates are still not anything to talk about, so Star Ohio is our best bet.
I just want to say kudos to you when it comes to continuous improvement. I really think that you're speaking and commending to make the information more valuable to us. So thank you for that, I appreciate it. You know, we all get these double days in advance in the meetings, and we can do a deeper dive into these numbers, and makes it feel a little faster for our meeting. We've done a lot of work with that.
I also want to say thank you to Shirley Plumley for amending the site. And I know when we had the super news and it was in the booklet format, I would submit just a couple graphs, just a full page for her. Now she's got it on the website, so that it's a continuous slideshow. So tonight, after these reports are approved, that I can go in, drop these into the slideshow, and they're immediately on the website. So thank you, Shirley, for.
Okay, any other discussion?
I feel like I want to talk about this donation. I think this is new.
Okay.
We had donations in the past for the facility improvement to us, we did, but I don't think we had one that could impact professional development or curriculum.
We, we get donations often for specific items or specific things. I think we have had donations that could be used for professional development, certainly. I know a lot of times someone will say, I'm going to donate this, I want it to be used for a specific classroom even, or just certain building or certain initiative. I don't know that this is, this is a little bit abnormal, just because of what's going on in the world right now and what we're experiencing here, children. So it, it looks like it's something new, but the idea of donating something for a specific purpose is, is not there.
So I think we would want to be clear, donating is being held until a specific purpose is then identified and approved by the board, that giving a donation is not going to drive any change in curriculum or direction of the school board. But rather, it is nice, it helps us supplement our general fund. And we are, I think this anticipates that we will have some expenditures, whether it's professional development or consultant or whatever. So I, I totally appreciate that. I just want to be really careful that there's not an inference that we take donations and that changes our direction.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, in the past, if you don't, if a donation is for a good purpose and we don't use that, we can then give it out.
Yeah, there's a difference between a donation of a grant as well. A grant, we would have, you know, we, we do receive grants from state foundation or CTO, and those are for a specified purpose. And we are obligated to legally, because there's, there's some sort of an agreement to use it for that purpose. Grants is, you know, we get all kinds of grants as well. Donations, it's a little bit different. We, we always strive to do something, you know, in, in the manner that somebody wanted us to. Certainly, if somebody gave me something, you know, for a high school, we would turn around and call their names, hey, $10,000 worth. We always use it for the intended purpose, but I don't think we ever make decisions on what we want to do based on a donation. And that would be different for a grant, because a teacher may write a grant request to the PTO and ask for something specific where it typically gets to God, and they don't, honey, they can't do it. They get the money that they do, that relationship sort of derives action, but I don't think donations. Thanks for the interview.
She's trying to reinforce that this donation, we are very thankful to the self family for supporting the district. And as we move forward with this work, we will use it in some way that the board has determined the administration is one of the first steps towards this work, but we are far away from even determining one of those steps. You're putting it in a line right up there, kept safe and till we can go to the justice.
And that's why we don't call me, but the general fund, we can, we can put that way.
Did you say that?
That's why we don't call me, but the general fund, I know they have it separately, and it's a little special process center.
And just to confirm, because you communicated with them, that the purpose is this broad. It's to be used for DEIT or if there's nothing else that it's being pushed.
Yeah, I have the, the letter that they wrote with it, and that's, that's how they work it.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Pretty little, we just think that we're old.
Sorry.
Yes.
This is very, yes, this is for, yeah, this is beautiful, yes.
Okay, beyond the other business, is there any other business? None, so our next meeting will be September 22nd.
Can we just confer location if possible? It's because we know we had many discussions of the industry finalists that there is no conflict here on 22nd. There are conflicts moving forward, although they're having a personal space. It is discussed, maybe, if we still need spacing, which I think this works well to have spacing maybe to try the middle school cafeteria as well. So I don't know how you feel, you know, but we have a meeting here on 22nd, February.
Have things in place where we'd like to be trying to get it into one specific general locations that have the staff in the all around.
I think that would be helpful, because I feel like, I don't know, sometimes I feel like there are numbers, you know, where's it going to be this week? And they, you know, we could be, if we could settle, like, I'm just not comfortable with saves right now, because socialists can see, or people can see, I don't know, look at it, numbers. I just worry that I want everyone that wants to be able to head to the safe way.
Can we, can we ask our.
So the middle school would probably work slightly better, because you echo in here, it's, it's giving me a real problem tonight. Sand is the perfect place, but I get not having it there. If I had to choose between the middle school right now or here after tonight's fun, I would love to try the middle school.
I just, in addition, our stem lab, you thought we're buying a workspace than the.
I don't think so, I don't think there's no room, I think that's actually probably smaller than the sand from the green scene things.
And just to remind, I'll be here, I'm delivering my hat in college, I suppose, so I will be coming in and.
We'll make sure you have a.
And actually, I, I really trust you to work with the tech team on that makes the most sense.
I try to clear.
I try to flare. Your mic is good. These mics tonight are amazing, so thank you.
I think we can chat, one more chat period, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Can we try, because we know the other conflict of the sixth year.
I'm good, I'm good with that.
So we can actually get it as published locations.
Sure.
So we, I have our, we don't have the middle school cafeteria.
No, we need your mic too, because there is right there.
Yep.
We can just. So we, you and I did it earlier in the afternoon.
Jen, we don't have really the dates for next year, but we just have our, if Leila has a date for a major of this year, I would like to capture that, so.
Thank you.
Actually, but if someone in the public wants to confirm our meeting, do they just go to the board page and look at the agenda and the agenda will have at the top where the meeting is held?
I would like to say yes, but I'm not personally picked up updates that, so I have publishers and it's always correct. Um, we'll certainly do our best there. We are working on getting something on the website. I might, I spoke briefly about it. Um, there's just a little bit more promise of it when you go to the, maybe the board page, probably, you know, next board page. It's there.
Right.
Um, right now you can find it, but it takes a couple clicks. It's not like, you know, just right there.
It's on the.
The 22nd, you can say at the middle school cafeteria.
And time for the sort of nightmare, certainly, you know, whatever you should call it, but that virtual um, his, his end of team will be.
I have to do things to.
Not you. I have a soft pillow, but I. It's gonna go like this. Yes, here, I'm sorry, it's off.
All right, you have a motion for adjournment?
Don't do it.
I'll say it now.
Okay, Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
This is Gary.
Yes.
This is Ben.
Yes.
This is Bruce.
Yes.
This is April.
Uh, I guess so.
We want more.